Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak. However, if anybody would like to speak in the future, please contact the chair prior to our next scheduled meeting. The next item on our agenda is Chairpersons and Members Reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Swire.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I just want to call the community's attention to the fact that this is American Education Week, and today, as part of that week, it is deemed Education Support Professionals Day, and that is a day that is to recognize all support staff who make our schools function as well as they do, from secretaries and clerical support staff to paraeducators, cafeteria staff, custodians, and maintenance, bus drivers, extended school care, IT, whoever it is that's helped making things work for the educators and administrators, but ultimately for our students and families. We have an amazing team here in Shrewsbury, just so many dedicated, skillful people who are doing that work every day, and I just want to signal my gratitude on behalf of the school district to all of those colleagues. That is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Great, thanks so much. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is Parker Road Preschool School Improvement Plan, Presentation and Vote. For background on this, each Massachusetts public school must have a school council consisting of faculty, parents, and a community member who advise the principal on the development of a school improvement plan. This year, each school's school council had used the district's 2023-2027 strategic plan and the district's 2024-2025 strategic goals and action steps to determine which goals were most important to be emphasized and to develop, school-specific goals aligned with the district goal. Ms. Bridget Nichols, who is the director of the preschool here in Shrewsbury, will provide an update on the progress of last year's plan during her presentation at tonight's meeting. The 2024-2025 School Improvement Plan for Parker Road Preschool has been enclosed in our packet, and Ms. Nichols is here today to present to the committee. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'll try not to read every word because it is a little long. Okay, thank you all so much for having me back. I was here actually in May to share our school improvement plan from last year, and we did accomplish a few of our action steps at that time, but there are some more that I would love to share with you all tonight. Just a quick reminder for our families at home in our community that Parker Road Preschool is one of two, well, sorry, one of three of our preschool programs. So we have three locations of preschooling, preschool programs in Shrewsbury. Two are under, fall under the Parker Road Preschool umbrella at 15 Parker Road and at Beal, and then we also have Little Colonials, which is at Shrewsbury High School, and that is part of our Early Childhood Education Lab Program for our high school students. So within all of our preschool programs, we do share the same curriculum standards and frameworks that we follow. The difference between Parker Road Preschool and Little Colonials is that at Parker Road we are integrated, which means that our classrooms have students, half, about half that are following services that are guided directly by their individualized education program under special education, and then students that also pay tuition to attend our classes. So just a little background information about Parker Road Preschool and preschool in general in Shrewsbury. So we are taking some of our action steps here. You can see, as indicated by the blue checkmarks, that we have been able to accomplish most of what we set out to do last year. We spent a lot of time looking at our universal design for learning, our multi-tiered systems of support, and the individual preschool practices for our English learners. We are very fortunate this year. We are continuing with that work, and it is just really building a strong, it built a strong foundation for our work that we are going to be continuing to do this year. As you can see, the last action step, which is aligning our current progress monitoring tool to the updated preschool report card, that is our goal for this year, but it may end up going into next year. It's a very big project to redo a report card, but we are definitely in the works for that. So we love data at preschool because it really does help inform what we want to do within our classrooms and the instruction we seek to provide. So our specific goal last year was to increase our identification and use of UDL strategies within our classrooms by 10% of baseline levels. Our baseline data was collected through staff survey in January of 2024, and at that point, only 11% of our teachers felt as though they were effectively collecting information and monitoring the progress of their students, and so you can see that highlighted by the arrows there. In June, we had a chance to take the same staff survey, and at that point, 50% of our teachers had felt as though they had an improved understanding and use of data collection to monitor their students' progress. So we were really happy to see that the work through the work of our department, department meetings, and our own independent and group professional development, we were able to have teachers feel more confident in how they were measuring the progress of their students. Results also showed that 50% of staff believed that they were more effective as an educator due to the supportive, the support team that they had in their classrooms. So we did also focus on collaboration time and structuring that, so teachers felt as though they knew who to ask for, for help within the preschool. Through our school-specific goal within the district's strategic priority of promoting student and staff wellness, we sought to ensure our preschool community, so our students, our staff, our families, that they receive explicit instruction paired with multiple opportunities for practice designed to strengthen our self-awareness, self-regulation, social connection, personal relationships, and responsible decision-making, which are all components of the CASL frameworks, which I know we've talked a lot about. During our targeted faculty meetings, we engaged in structured learning activities to practice using self-awareness strategies, social connection, and personal relationships. So the blue checkmarks here identify which steps we completed, and although we'd like to say that we've mastered these strategies, we are human and we are works in progress, so we will continue to focus on these strategies within ourselves as the adult models for our preschool students, as well as building it into our curriculum. The green checkmarks indicate work that we started last year, and we are going to continue to roll that into our school improvement plan for this year. So in June, as part of our end-of-the-year survey, I asked our teaching staff to identify a few of the barriers that impacted their feelings of efficacy. Over half of our responses pointed to the short duration of the school day and the number of demands our teachers were asked to complete within that two-and-a-half-hour preschool session. We did create this lovely grown-up tune-up space within our preschool, and we thought maybe if teachers had a place to catch their breath, have a few minutes of quiet, grab a sweet treat, that it would give some respite and relief within the school day, but those demands were really a lot that they were facing when they identified those barriers. So as we move into this year, we will continue to align our preschool goals with the district's commitment to educational excellence and enhanced well-being for all. Just a quick note of our goals and how we do things at Parker Road and in preschool. Play is the primary medium through which we provide our instruction and how we will support this learning with our students. I do want to note that the instructional strategies, scaffolding, and supports we use are embedded within play, so it is the way in which we are able to create meaningful and purposeful activities, learning activities for our students. So as I just mentioned, 56% of teachers and professional staff identified last year that the short duration of the preschool day was the number-one barrier they faced when feeling successful in their role. Additionally, 33% of integrated preschool teachers and professional staff indicated that their need for specific skill-based training was a top barrier that they were facing in order to feel effective as an educator. Our goals for this year directly respond to those barriers. We plan to utilize portions of our grade-level meetings for training on the preschool life skills supplemental curriculum, as well as to redesign our child-study team, which is what we give to our response-to-intervention plans, to include direct support to our teachers regarding Tier One and Tier Two SCL strategies. There's also an action step here that is listed to target the barrier of our current preschool session model, and that's something I would like to just take a moment to share in the next slide. The purpose of thinking through the impact of a full-day option in preschool is something I wanted to note, and this slide here shares the purpose behind what a full-day program or preschool session would do for us at Parker Road. The first is that it would respond to the needs of our families. We have heard from our school community, as well as the community at large, that roughly 60 to 67% of families in Shrewsbury are looking for a preschool program that is full-day, so that is longer than the two-and-a-half hours that we currently provide. The second purpose is to better preve, excuse me, better prepare our students for a longer school day in kindergarten. There's also an increase in academic demands that our students have to face and transition to when they go to kindergarten. By providing a longer school day in preschool and access to more curriculum across the week, we will better assess how we are preparing our students for kindergarten. We are hoping to provide more young children in Shrewsbury with access to early childhood education. As you can see from this chart, we are currently falling short of our capacity. With our current model, we can support up to 160 half-day students, and we currently, for this school year, 24, 25 school year, we have 126 half-day students enrolled. A partial full-day model would allow for us to meet the demand being asked by a percentage of our community while still offering the desired half-day preschool model. At Parker Road, we greatly appreciate this district's strategic priority and reminder to make sure we are fueled mentally, emotionally, and physically in order to meet the diverse learning needs of our students and families. As at every grade level, there are barriers that can make it challenging for our classroom teachers to feel like they are making a difference. We know at the preschool level, we are often challenged by the shorter school day that makes it difficult to target all the learning areas we hope to accomplish. In order to effectively respond to these barriers, we need to make sure that we, as adults, have strong emotional skills to develop those coping strategies and to model them for our students. This goal that, again, is grounded in the district's commitment to enhance well-being for all lists a lot of action steps. We do feel as though this is a big goal to undertake, but we think it is really important. At the preschool level, we have identified that our students that are coming in and part of our classrooms require explicit instruction related to some of those core social and emotional learning skills that set them up to be successful in kindergarten. We've had the fortune, the good fortune, to collect data over the past few years to see what are some of those barriers when students either fall apart when they get to kindergarten or make it really hard for them to be as successful as they can be. So within that, it's truly the social-emotional domains that we are looking at. So there are three main targets within this school area. One is that with the support of our preschool PBIS team and district leadership, we will participate in formalized training from the May Institute and create consistent school-wide behaviors and expectations for our students and staff. The second target within this goal is through the work that we do in our Educational Excellence Goal, where we are looking to redesign some of our current model, we will be continually assessing the progress of our students within the integrated preschool classrooms and building capacity to support more structured Tier Two interventions and supports for identified students. So to put that into layman's terms, we are really looking to be able to support a wider variety of students and their needs within the classroom by having set consistent behavioral expectations and curriculum across our classrooms. And finally, we, within this goal area, plan to ensure our teacher resources are accessible and effective in meeting the demands of their role, as well as the varied needs of their students. So we really want to make sure that they have the training that they need to be successful and that they know how to access the who and the what and the why to support their So here is a quick preview, or sneak preview, I should say, into our PBIS behavior matrix for our, at the preschool level. This is our motto. This is what we will be focusing all of our behavioral expectations on. So together, we play, practice safety, learn and grow, act kindly, and yes, I can. And hopefully, this video clip is going to work. It's a very short video of one of our classroom teachers reminding our students of what the expectations are when we start our day in preschool. So let's hope.
All right, my friends, time for the high-five promise. Hands up. Repeat after me. I will be nice.
I will be nice.
I will share.
I will share.
I will help.
I will help.
I will do my best.
I will do my best.
I will have fun.
I will have fun.
High-five me? One more time? Awesome job. All right, my friends, circle time is all done. Now it is time for...
So that was Mrs. Smith, one of our preschool teachers, and she says that every day. So it is fantastic because the kids will learn that motto, and they will learn just by the cue of a high-five what it is that is expected of them during the school day.
All right, my...
So I do want to just take a quick note to thank our school council. We have Mrs. Arlena Boyle, who is one of our speech and language pathologists, Mrs. Cara Vinsalet, who is one of our integrated preschool teachers, Mia Rigani, who is one of our special education instructional aides, and Brandon Richard, who is one of our parents of two preschool students at our preschool at Beal. And that's it.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Effernan?
Yeah, I'm, all of my children have spent time in your, in your buildings and think of one, you know, really run such a wonderful program, but when I, I have to say, when I look at the action steps, I also don't want anyone to not think that it is a program full of educators, right? The language and the models and just like how we're moving to our early literacy, the PBIS structures, like all of the pieces that we're talking about in our elementary schools and beyond, and how well-integrated and certainly you're trying to, to get and continue to be for the preschool level is just very impressive, and I really appreciate your leadership in, in getting us to that place. I'd love to hear just a little bit more about, because I think there's, you know, when I, when I was looking back at your pie chart, it looked like between the yes and the maybe of how, how interested would you be in a full-day program, nearly everyone, right? The 95% are either yes or maybe. So can you say what you're, where you are in the planning of that? It looks like it's a next-year potential proposal, but, so what, what kind of, what would have to be different, or what are some of the things that you may need support with as you move through this year to get ready for that?
So thank you for asking. We are definitely in the stages where we are looking to have a location and the hours of the day. So really looking at, it could be a five-day program, so five full days, in making that step from a two-and-a-half hour to a, it wouldn't be quite a six-hour, but a five-hour day for our families or for our students. I am in contact with Westboro Public Schools, as they also have a partial full-day program as well to learn more about some of the steps they've taken to get there. Things that we have to consider are for our students who are receiving special education services through an IEP and what model that would look like for their needs, and additionally, the transportation for those students. So it would be different than a half-day. So there are some factors that we need to consider and develop specific, I guess, procedures related to the full-day program.
Great. I imagine there will be many people in the community who would like more, and certainly space historically has been a major constraint, and so, and I'm not pretending it's not a constraint at different levels as well for us to think about, but, but thank you. I look forward to some updates as you move through that.
Great. Further comments, Ms. Reitz?
So following up to what Ms. Effernan said, it looks like you'll start with 20 students. Is that for the first...
So the, so what I would like to see happen is that we have two classrooms, and so the ratios would be 10 tuition-paying students to five students who are on an IEP, so that we still maintain that integrated ratio because we know how important that is for our students, both with and without disabilities. And so 20 students would be 10 in each classroom. I think with the numbers we did discuss that perhaps they could go up to 17, we would not want to go past the kindergarten ratios, so maybe at least for planning purposes, stay in around 15.
15, okay. And I agree, I think it's something that will have a lot of traction with families as employers are having people come back to the office or the workplace more than three or two days a week now, and it's something that we heard during the pre-K to four study that we did.
Right.
That seemed to be one of the issues that parents really wanted to see, so I'm glad that we're going to take a look at it, and I hope it's very successful, and I also would like to have more updates on that as you work through this.
Yes.
Definitely a need in the community, for sure.
Ms. Nichols, would you still kind of just bring the slide back with the table that you showed in terms of the number of seats? I think it's just important to clarify, I know the school committee has this in an email, but, you know, what we're looking at right now is that we have essentially 160 seats for tuition-paying students. This does not include students who are being educated because of their IEP, because of their special needs. Out of those 160, we only have 126 of them filled right now.
Right.
Which is just showing a different type of demand or need. You know, typically, in years pre-COVID, all those seats would be filled and would have a waiting list. And, and so, you know, when you look at what I see in the green on the right, which is if we took essentially two of the existing classrooms, made them full-day, and those would be 20 tuition seats plus 10 more IEP seats across, you know, two 15-student classrooms, it would, you know, bring the total number of available seats down from 160 to 148. But if we filled them all, we'd actually have more students receiving preschool stu, you know, services on a tuition basis than we do right now.
Correct.
So there's a little bit of like, we have capacity space-wise, but the capacity we have is not in demand because of these, especially the afternoon sessions, but even some morning sessions are not filled.
Correct.
Which is highly unusual based on our history. Is that a fair assessment?
It is, yes. And I can see if the morning seats are available because the students that are on that waitlist are currently placed either in an afternoon session or they've been identified as a child who requires IEP services, and so that for, they don't, no longer fall under the tuition ratio, tuition-to-student ratio. So we're not able to fill those at this point because we don't have more students on that waitlist, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So again, it's question of demand. I think that Ms. Nichols and her team are kind of looking at what, what's been successful in other districts, what would that look like? One of the things that would, of course, would come to school committee is there'd be a recommendation for a tuition level to set for a full-day program, um, what that would look like. But, you know, part of the, I think, initial conversations that Ms. Nichols has had, and has made me aware of, is that the potential is actually to bring in more tuition because we actually, right now, are not meeting as much of the demand right now, or we don't have the demand for those tuition slots at the moment. So, you know, those are things we have to look at, obviously, what's the financial feasibility? What would that look like in terms of the split between families who are paying tuition versus families who are receiving it at no cost because it's a requirement of the student's IEP? So again, there's pieces with transportation and all those things that have to get worked out, but I think it's a very, I certainly, from my perspective, it's a very promising potential approach.
Yeah.
And I also am looking forward to hearing more about how this could evolve and whether we can put something into place for next year that will serve the demand that we do have better than what our current structure is.
Further questions? Ms. Reitz?
I agree. I think that especially with a full day, that this is something that the community wants. As an aside, as a funny thing, this morning when I was talking to Dr. Swire, I was going through the, the packet, and I was happy to see that there was a full day, but I read it that you were going to have this up and running by June. And I was like, wow, that is really lofty, but I know that we're working on that plan. But it'll be, it'll be really interesting to see, not only does the community want it, but to see the students that do end up enrolling in the full day, how they are better prepared for kindergarten, and as we track them through elementary school, and how is their literacy, and we're going to have a report on MCAS later, and we have such, so much work going on with, you know, our STAR assessments to see, does that make a difference? You know, starting from a full day. My kids all did half-day programs, and they came out and it was amazing what they were able to soak in in two-and-a-half hours, and it'll probably be even more amazing to see in a five-and-a-half-hour day. But also, I appreciate in your plan, your responsiveness to the staff in the building as well, and really listening to what their needs are and where they are saying, this is a barrier for me, how can we approve, and really addressing that. I think that'll prepare them better, which in turn prepares the kids, the students better. So thank you for the, the work on that.
Great. Ms. Reitz.
I'd also just like to thank you for the report. It's always good to hear from you and what's going on at Parker Road. I liked how a focus is going to be this year on identifying the discrepancies between preschool and the kindergarten programming to try to make the transition even smoother. If you could just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So one of the things that we've identified for that jump between preschool and kindergarten is that the, the literacy program or the math program, those academic demands are a little bit larger than what our preschool students are facing in preschool. So one of, what we're identifying, since we are not at that level, we are not currently participating in the L literacy program, but we are working on foundations and integrity. So there are those, we're trying to align with what the demands are in kindergarten to what's developmentally appropriate for preschool. And so one of the ways that we are doing that is by trying to translate. That's what I keep, that we need to translate preschool language to kindergarten language, and those worlds, they can seem far apart, but what we're trying to do is make them not so far apart, if that makes sense. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. I agree too. I always think it's really good to measure satisfaction, not only in my business of the customer, but also the associate, and I think in this case, students and obviously staff, staff driving the success for the students. So I really encourage you to continue collecting that data, just to make sure the staff have what they need. And just remind me again, I know it's probably already been said, the 20 that are listed as full-day, that would, that's like based on an estimate, like based on the demand, right?
It would be based on our, the ratio of preschool classrooms.
Okay.
So we would have, we need to have, if we have 10 students that are tuition-paying, to have five students who are on an IEP, so it supports that integration ratio.
Got it, okay.
And the 10, so it would be across two classrooms, so we'd have two classrooms of 10 tuition-paying students.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Dr. Swire, any further comments?
I want to thank Ms. Nichols for the report and to the school council, of course, for their work to, to support that, and all the faculty and support staff at Parker Road Preschool. I think, you know, the introspection, the, the looking at how they can improve, I mean, really signals how deeply they care about wanting to make sure that their program is as high-quality as possible. I want to be sure everyone understands, and you alluded to it, it is a super-high-quality program. We're very proud of our preschool. They're always trying to get better. It is a joyful place to be when, when you walk into those classrooms and the, I mean, and it is an incredible skill for our preschool educators in order to orchestrate transitions that have to happen, you know, virtually every couple of minutes, just given the attention span of children that age, and to keep them engaged, to have them be happy, to have them learning. It's a wonderful place for our kids, and, you know, what we've also seen, we have some incredibly skilled, all of our preschool integrated classroom teachers are also special educators, and then we have specialists who are there as well, and to see the growth that happens with students who may arrive when they turn age three with some really significant challenges. Sometimes those are physical, sometimes they are educational, and the progress that's made during their time at Parker Road is, is just remarkable. So we're very proud of our preschool program and, you know, appreciate the thoughtful planning and thinking, how can we make it even better? How can we make those transitions stronger? How can we set students up for, for future success? And I think everyone's familiar with the fact that there's a very, very significant body of research that says, high-quality preschool doesn't just make a difference going to kindergarten, it makes a difference for their entire life. I mean, there are outcomes of students who have high-quality preschool in terms of secondary education, jobs beyond K to 12, K to 12 is pretty remarkable, and, you know, I think something we're going to have to keep looking at strategically is, what is the investment our district and our community is going to make in preschool where there's not only demand, but if we can have high-quality experiences? Because when we have kids who come to kindergarten who haven't had a preschool experience, the difference can be stark. So, you know, we know that we're very fortunate to have such a strong program, some excellent private programs in the area as well, but we have a wonderfully strong public preschool program here in Shrewsbury, and appreciate everything that they all do. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. Do you need to vote? So if there are no further comments or questions, I do need a motion that the committee vote to approve the 2024-2025 School Improvement Plan for Parker Road Preschool.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the Shrewsbury High School School Improvement Plan, Presentation and Vote, and here to present is Todd Sidlow, Principal.
He's brought a special guest. He's brought a special guest, Liza Trombley, who's our Director of English, uh, for Shrewsbury High School.
So welcome.
Well, thanks for having us tonight. We're happy to share our, the work we've done and with our school council in presenting you this plan. Uh, and I'm happy and pleased to have one of our school council members, who also happens to be our Director of English and also a parent in the community as part of our school council, but presenting with me tonight. So Mrs. Liza Trombley's with me.
So these are our members of our school council, you might recognize, um, Jay as a member of our school council. Um, our school council consists of parents, educators, Mr. Vazidlow, and currently we have one student. Um, I know we'd like to bring another on board. The way our process has worked is we meet ideally monthly at seven in the morning, it's usually pretty dark. Um, we get there early, um, we have an hour before school starts and we focus on how, kind of how things are going in the building. Um, Todd usually provides an update to the council, um, and we usually talk about that for a little bit before we move on to, um, focusing on our school plan and how we're going to align that with our strategic priorities. So what we want to share with you all tonight is the progress that we made last year, um, and what we're doing going forward. So our first, is educational excellence. And so what we were able to complete last year was our first year, well, actually our second year, but our first year of really focused work at the high school with TNTP, which is formerly known as the New Teacher Project. Um, and you can see, we have a lot of completed steps. Um, we, I won't read through all of them. Um, but basically what we did is we brought TNTP in, um, as really highly skilled consultants to work with the English Department and the Social Sciences Department to visit ninth-grade classes um, and to see what instructional strategies were in place to make sure that students were looking at grade-level texts, that they were, um, taking ownership of their learning and that they were engaged in high-quality questions and tasks. So it was a, a good look at like what was going on, um, and reviewing it and being open to feedback on it and then thinking about what the next steps would be to go forward. Um, so we created a PDSA, a Plan Do Study Act cycle, so that we could, um, every time we saw teachers, we could think about, well, what's our next step? How are we going to implement it? How are we going to assess it? And then how are we going to act going forward? So it was a really good framework, I learned a lot from participating in it. Um, and I think it's helped us to think about what we want to do moving forward, which is our instructional prioritization initiative, which we'll talk about a little later. Okay, that's telling. Um, the next priority we have is to have, um, more opportunities for more students across subgroups to access higher-level coursework as designated by DESI. So DESI decides which classes are considered advanced coursework. Um, so it's not every honors class, it's not every AP class, it's the ones that DESI says are advanced. It's also, um, courses in the Project Lead the Way pathways that are advanced. And so our goal as a school was to make sure that there are not barriers to access to those classes so that students from all demographics, um, were represented in those classes, um, and could be successful in them. So we took steps like adjusting our course selection, um, process and timeline to make sure that, um, everybody was granted equal access. We are seeing gains, but we haven't gotten through a full year yet, so we don't have an updated statistic on how that's going.
Great, I know this has been a, a topic of the school committee for a number of weeks, so we started this work last year around career technical education, developing pathways and enhancing our career exploration. I'm happy to report that we've, we've done a lot of work in this area, as you know. Um, we are continuing the one, uh, item that's still in our action set that's in progress is continuing to cultivate those relationships with businesses and partnerships with those companies to enhance potentially, whether it's, um, career exploration, job shadow or internship. So we're continuing that work and that'll be represented within, you'll see that again tonight with our twenty-four, twenty-five plan. Again, aligned with our career exploration, we've done a lot of work around the career exploration from our Lunch and Learns and holding career fairs. What's really remarkable, if you, if you look on the update status column is our goal was to, uh, expand opportunities for career exploration, job shadowing, internship. So twenty-five percent of students at the high school would have, be engaged in a career exploration experience. The overachieving community of Shrewsbury helped us out with this, but clearly we had over thirteen hundred students participate in some level of that. So we kind of knocked that out of the park, we probably undershot our idea of having that happen and that'll continue to grow. So if you look in that right-hand column, we had a hundred and seventy-one students participate in Lunch and Learn, we had fifty job shadow students. We had a career exploration, a hundred and seventy-five students that attended, uh, job shadows or career exploration during typically either summer months or during our school vacation weeks. Uh, and then we had another hundred and thirty-six students do some career exploration work during the school day. We had a hundred and twenty-six students participate in internships. And the, we had over seven hundred and seventy-five students participate in our job and career fairs that are held in our commons, typically on an early release day. So pretty successful and again, tribute to the community, uh, Kathleen Cohen, Dr. Lozot, and this year Karen Erres for courting those efforts. So I want to thank them for their efforts, uh, last year. Believe this is me?
Yes.
This is probably.
Mm-hmm.
So as you know, we've had a issue with attendance. I think every school district in the state has had an issue with chronic absenteeism and attendance. So we really focus on, uh, taking a look at this, using our student wellness team to identify students who might be chronically absent or have attendance issues, do a lot of outreach, a lot of conversations with families. And as you look at the update and status, and we'll talk about this again, in our twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five plan, which we'll cover in a little bit, is we adjusted our attendance policy per semester to seven day, from nine days to seven days. And we implemented a five-week, some weeks, five-week summer program for those that, uh, needed some, to get some time back because they're out of seat time. I tell parents that we're only in school for a hundred and eighty days, we're only in school for six hours of the six hours. We may have five hours of instruction with passing time and lunch and all that built in. So th- those hours are critically important. Uh, if you're at home and in the audience, I would suggest and highly, highly, I ask you to refrain from taking vacations during the school year. We really want your kids in school, we really want them to have a high-quality experience with the work we're doing instructionally. Uh, and we'll hopefully see gains on this, so we'll talk more about that. But overall, uh, we've implemented those things, uh, last school year.
Our next area of focus is well-being, um, and we had a goal based around our panorama data, um, to decrease the number of students who indicated that they had issues with social awareness, um, emotional regulation, self-efficacy, cultural awareness, um, and action and a sense of belonging. So as you can see in the far right-hand column, we did not meet our ten percent goal. We were hoping that, you know, ten percent would show gains in those categories. Um, and we felt a little bit short of that, but I think overall, this is a very good news story, um, that students are feeling that they are becoming more socially aware, they are able to self-regulate, um, a little bit better, um, that they do feel a much higher sense of belonging and cultural awareness and action. And for me, eh, the really good news story is that they understand what those things are and that they're able to address them and to see gains in those. Um, and I think that's, um, a credit to all the hard work we've been doing.
Finally, optimization of resources, this aligned with last year's submission to the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority for potential expansion of the high school based upon severe overcrowding. We'll continue, again, this will be in the next plan for next year, but, uh, we completed that, we worked, we met with the MSBA, we completed all the, the appropriate paperwork. And again, uh, many thanks to people who, there was more than, uh, me involved in that, but a lot of people put in a lot of time, energy and effort to try and address the overcrowding situation we have at the high school. So now, uh, that was a recap of twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, and now we'll go through twenty-four, twenty-five improvement plan. Uh, again, focusing on educational excellence, we took the strategic priority right now, put on this slide so those in the audience can see what we're focused on.
So this year, um, in order to address this priority, we have expanded the work with the TNTP consultants from English and Social Sciences, and we've moved it to math, um, science and world languages. We are continuing to collect data, um, in English and Social Sciences, but we're focusing on these three new areas so that they can become familiar with the process, so that they can, um, really take a hard look at what's happening in their classrooms and making sure that students are taking ownership of their learning and that they're involved with high-quality, um, questions and tasks, um, throughout the learning period every day.
Yeah, when, when we met with a consultant, I'll, I'll point out, um, there's really four domains that we look at. We look at strong cultural learning, which is really evident in ninety-eight percent of the classrooms that we visit, close to a hundred percent. Uh, our materials are high-quality instructional materials connected to contents, content standards and state frameworks. So we've seen evidence of that. The two areas where we look for patterns and trends when we did this initial work was looking at high-quality questions and tasks and then looking at student ownership, how much work are students doing, how much, how much work do they do within the class to own their learning? And when we looked over the course of last year and beginning of this year, we still see some patterns and trends of like, we need to do, we need to do a better job of that. And that's when we talk about, when we combine the attendance piece and having students have seat time within the classroom. We want to make that, that time within the classroom sacrosanct in a sense of like, we're not going to be able to replicate through a Google slideshow, through Schoology, what we're learning in the classroom. Uh, teachers are really focused on this, we'll talk more about it in the next slide, but, uh, those are really two areas that we focus on our, and have, are seeing gains as we look at data. And we collect, every time we visit a classroom, we collect data. Uh, and we'll talk a little bit more about the expansion of that this year with our next slide.
Um, so this year we've implemented the Instructional Prioritization Institute or Initiative, which we call IPI. Um, and what this is, is at the high school, it's very difficult to collaborate because we don't have built-in collaboration time. What we do have is twenty minutes at the end of every day, um, or half an hour, but by the time, you know, you transition and all that, it's about twenty minutes at the end of every day, um, where teachers are still contractually working. Um, and we pull them on the Tuesdays that we don't have other meetings. So it's about twice a month, um, in an ideal month. And we introduce strategies, um, to those teachers to help them keep their students engaged in those high-quality questions and tasks. So sometimes the strategies may be something that they would have learned, um, if they were going to school now, but many of our teachers went to school twenty-five years ago. And so it's, it's a good refresher, um, even for some of our, you know, most skillful teachers, um, of things that they can do. Um, it's also a really good opportunity to have teachers collaborate and talk about what's working for them and what's not working for them and the struggles that they have, and then for directors to respond. Because direct, as directors, we run those meetings, um, and think like, well, what can we do? So for an, as an example, one of the things that is a maybe unintended consequence of the iPads is students like to take pictures of us doing work as opposed to like writing, right? And so our department engaged in, like, we're doing a thing called Board to Paper. So if I'm writing it, you should be writing it. Um, and it sounds silly and it sounds simple, but it's like, that's not kids' natures. Their nature is to take a picture of what they just saw. And we know through science that that's not how the information is going to be best retained. So it's simple strategies like that that we can cover in a twenty-minute period. Um, and really remind teachers that students need to be doing this. So they're focused on techniques from a book called Teach Like a Champion, um, which everybody on Shrewsbury High School leadership team read. Um, and so far it seems to be going well. Um, we're, we're not that far into it, but so far so good.
This is a goal that's aligned with strategic priorities around artificial intelligence. We'll certainly participate in that artificial intelligence community, uh, study group once we be, once we launch it. Uh, we'll recruit staff and students and parents to participate in it. Uh, I think, I'm not sure that everyone realizes they use probably AI every single day. If you Google something on your phone, typically the results come up generative. The first thing that comes up now is what AI generates for potential responses and a list of websites. Um, for those that have used Grammarly, Grammarly is now, it used to be a spell check kind of on steroids. Uh, now it's generative AI. Um, so trying to figure out how we use that, operate that, uh, what that looks like at, at various levels, that'll be important. So the study group will help, help frame what we're doing across the district and we'll certainly support the, that effort. Again, this is a, again, a repeat because it's another, we'll continue on with a work of trying to increase the number of students that participate in advanced-level coursework. We'll make a couple of, uh, adjustments to what we did last year, but overall, we made good progress around, uh, communicating what advanced coursework is to families, what it is for students, and then, uh, encouraging students to take a chance in participate in things that they might not necessarily participate in. And you saw that, I think, at maybe two meetings though, when we talked about Project Lead the Way, the, the scope and size of the number of Project Lead the Way's offerings and students participating in that, uh, has grown exponentially over the last year and those are advanced courses. Additionally, continuing on with the career pathways piece and, uh, technical education, we'll continue to build these internship opportunities, which are, are, are hard to do in terms of like finding the time, looking at our schedule, setting up a schedule labor-intensive, no doubt. Uh, but we're making progress there and hopefully be able to launch that soon. Uh, again, looking at potential additions to Innovation Career Pathway offerings. There's a number of offerings and Mrs. Erres has been a mem, a part of numerous webinars this year to potentially look for expansion with our Program of Studies next year, so we're still working on that. And then of course, uh, publicize to students and families the potential of attending Lester High School under the Career Technical Education Agreement that was signed by the school committee, I think, two weeks ago. Again, we're looking to continue to refine the career and job exploration, job shadowing, again, a continuation of last year. And looking at student attendance, again, my, when I looked at this through the DESE, it looked like we were at twenty percent of students had a chronic attendance problem, not last year, but the year before, we dropped, I think, eighteen percent. So we're seeing gains already. Um, I think that's a little bit coming out of the pandemic and getting back into it. I think maybe Mrs. Trombley can talk a little bit about our conversations at school council and how students, uh, look at our number of days per semester.
Right, so, I mean, you should have seen the look on the adults' faces when the students were talking about their PTO, their paid time off. Um, they get nine, we get nine days, we can take nine days. And that is really a sentiment at the high school. Now it's reduced to seven and they're not happy, but they're coming to school more, which is, which is a vast improvement. And so I do think the pandemic had a absolutely detrimental effect on attendance. Um, I think that teachers inadvertently played a role in it, right? Because you made it very easy for kids who weren't in school, because there were a lot of kids who weren't in school. So it's like, here's my whole slideshow, here's every single thing you need to know. Because if a kid was out for five days or two weeks at one point with COVID, you wanted to make sure they had everything. And then we kept giving them those things. And then it became really easy to take a trip and stay caught up. Um, and so we're working really hard, um, to roll that back. Be like, actually, the really important stuff is what happens when you're here. And if you're not here, um, you do miss out. And of course, we're still working to get kids caught up, but it's not as easy as it was. And I do think that we will see gains with that over time. When, when I, I know when I say to my own freshmen, like, I'm not posting these notes. You have to take them, and then if you have questions, you can come see me. In the beginning of the year, I got strange looks, they're, what do you mean you're not posting those notes? And now they just know, I'm not posting these notes, so come see me. I mean, I do think it helps quite a bit, um, with attendance and for them to see the value of being in the classroom during instructional time.
Right, and we, we piloted a summer program last year, we had a lot of success with that. I thought we had outstanding attendance and the students who participated that had made some gains. And I don't want to say bought back time, but certainly had seat time that they didn't have, which was really important for them to kind of bridge some of the gaps that they had as a result of, of missing, uh, a number of school days. Next one's well-being.
Going back to that idea of that safe inclusive, inclusive environment, um, this is just another slide that talks about reducing those numbers of the chronically absent. And because we've changed from nine to seven, when we were at nine, if you multiply nine by two, you get eighteen and you're already at ten percent, which is what the state says is chronically absent. So we're kind of, we were almost like allowing up until that. Um, so now we're working hard, um, by bringing that back to seven to stay under that. And I think we'll see more gains for this year. The other thing, um, that we're looking at is the Panorama Survey. Um, we'll give that again twice this year, as we always do. Um, and thinking about how we're going to make gains in those categories and exceed some of those goals that you saw on a previous slide. One of the things that everybody in the district is engaged in, including the high school, is PBIS, um, to think about how we are going to just make the school day run a little bit smoother. I will say at the high school, it runs really smoothly, um, but there's always room for improvement. And so that's what we're focused on.
Yeah, clear, and for those that attended town meeting or all-school, high-school town meeting the day before Thanksgiving, I know some of you have attended that. Clearly articulating in that town meeting what the expectations are for student behavior, I do that every single year, and it's like, it's being clear about what the expectations are, whether we're in the auditorium for a class meeting or a town meeting or a performance, what your behavior should be, whether it's in the hallways or in the classroom, in the cafeteria or the commons, like, those are, we need to do a better job probably of articulating that so everyone's aware of what the expectations are, and truly, when we do that, students meet our expectations. That's been pretty consistent in my time at Shrewsbury. Again, optimization of resources, if the opportunity comes up with the MSBA, we certainly will follow Dr. Sawyer's lead and the school committee's lead and do whatever we need to complete the work associated with the MSBA. We're happy to take any questions you may have.
Great, thanks so much for the presentation, colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Effernan.
Sure, thank you very much, both of you, for your, for your time and to the entire school council for putting this together. I do, you can't help but think, you say it's a well-run building, it's like a well-run machine that you have there, right? And then, with a number of different areas, and I'm, I'm so impressed frankly with the quality, and this, this speaks to all of the schools, Dr. Sawyer, of the school improvement plans have over just the few years that I've been on school committee, become these much more robust plans that we can sort of measure and account for and, and, yeah, you wanted ten percent gains and you got eight percent, like, oh, okay, well, we weren't even paying attention to this, this topic before, right? And so I just, I just see whether it's on the well-being, the, the career work and saying, we set a goal of twenty-five and it's where, you know, percent, and we blew it out of the water. I'm just very, very impressed with the work you're doing with TNTP, looking across. I, I remember at one point when Dr. Sawyer, maybe, this is maybe a year and a half ago, I said, you know, so we're going to start with English and Social Studies, and my brain went to like where I knew my kid, and I'm like, what about math? Right, like, and so, so knowing, just been seeing that expand and continuing to kind of engage, you know, the educators and finding those little moments of time. And yeah, it's not a lot of moments, but I hadn't really thought about it, my kid uses this camera all the time, right? Like, and how, how we just develop these habits, so I love that you're trying to figure out how to, how to break them. And, and I, and I do think, Mr. Bizidlo, there's an awful lot of leadership that's demonstrated here from your team and lots of people who are juggling a whole bunch of balls to keep that building functioning, but to, whether it's, you know, in the, in the counseling with Ms. Flynn, your different, your assistant principals, right, at, at all of the, the entire leadership team on a, in the subject matter area. So just really appreciate, and one, one question, there was a piece in here around, around the absenteeism, appreciate, really think a change in the standards is a good idea, that what that looks like, it sounds like it makes a lot of sense, and if you've hit fourteen, we've, like, we've got like a problem. But one of the interventions, I believe, or one of the things you were proposing was sort of referring to counselors for like more individualized assessment, and so can you just like talk about what that looks like? What is that, what is that, how does that feel to a student, to a parent, you know, are they, I didn't know this was a problem? Or you, I imagine you have a lot of parents who are also probably calling and looking for help, right? I don't know what, I don't know what to do, so maybe talk about what that looks like?
Right, so every week, our student wellness team meets and reviews student attendance and student perform, academic performance and kind of trends and patterns that you see. We run monthly attendance target reports, we are in communication, whether it's through phone or sending letters to families, saying, this is where you are relative to your attendance. But generally, excuse me, generally, they have a lot of conversations, and the assistant principals will delegate members of the student wellness team to actually make contact and outreach to families. So they might be saying, Johnny's been absent so many times, I really need you to reach out to family, find out what's going on, and get some communication there. It might, we might find out that something's happening in the family that is legitimate. We might find that they have a need and we might have to bring in the, the school district's social work to provide some, family some assistance or connect them with services outside. So there's a number of things that we do, but I think our counselors are doing a lot of hard work around, beyond the school counseling pieces, part of school counseling, but beyond the college crush that we have right now around applications, they have a lot of other functions besides that, really looking at students' well-being is, is one of them, and attendance is an indicator of something is typically a miss, right? If we're not attending school, is it school phobia, is there some sort of sickness or illness, is it anxiety? Like, there's a bunch of things that can happen when students don't attend school, so drilling down on that, getting more information from families. So they do a lot of that, phone call work, email work, and then follow-up depending on what the level of, of need required.
Great, and well, tha, thank you very much, I just want to like sort of remind those who've been paying, paying attention, it was only a few years ago that we decided to make a pretty significant investment on, on the, sort of the, the mental health side of, of the, of the school systems, right, and really built, built that up, but, you know, making one phone call is one thing, now someone's going to have to follow up and figure out what's going on and help diagnose, and so while some of that can happen by the individuals who are in the building, sometimes that does take others across the district, so just very, very happy with the report, thank you.
Are there questions, Congress, Mr. Schreiber?
Thank you for the report, I thought it was very, very thorough, and there's definitely a plan in place that you will be able to check off the box and say, yes, we did that, or yes, it's a work in progress. It's funny how in such a modern age with all the technology that is available to us, that still the best way to learn was, is with your pencil and your paper, and writing things down and letting it be absorbed and to be in school, not learning on a computer. It's funny that students look at it at their, the time that they have available to them as PTO, because my kids will say, why do I have to go to school? And I'm like, that's your job. So I get, I get a PTO, although you have to go to school. And, you know, as we look at numbers across the state, as we look at like MCAS results, we see that not being in the classrooms had an effect on learning, so with the chronic absenteeism, if you're not there, it's not benefiting you. And I would also imagine that being there would increase the sense of belonging, which, although we're definitely making improvements across the board, we still have that sense of belonging that although it increased eight percent, we still have forty-two percent of kids that feel they don't belong, but I would imagine being in a classroom, being with your classmates would increase that. But I'm sure, because this is a detailed plan, that we will move the needle, just as the other ones move, that we'll continue to do that, so, thank you.
Ms. Bichette.
Just, can I just add something there that it's important, if, and if, I'm actually going to bump you off the screen if you don't mind, because I wanted to go into the panorama data, which, you know, we've been working with to a large and large degree, we actually have a panorama consultant meeting with our leadership team tomorrow to go over some of this data, and this, we just recently gave the fall assessment for this year. So one thing that's important to, and it kind of occurred, I, I concur, right? Obviously, we want, don't want to say only fifty-eight percent of our kids. That said, this is a national survey that's given across the country, and it's not easy to get the percentage of like, this is what's okay, and so in terms of compared to other schools, I think it's actually, it's a much better story than I would have looked at looking at, looking at the data initially. So as I bring this up on the screen, let me just, so this is last spring's survey for Shrewsbury High School, and as you can see, it's the best result they had over time, which was terrific, and they had an eight percent bump, which is great. They also show you, how does this compare to a national benchmark? And when you click for a non-urban school, that's a high school that has from zero to thirty percent low income, fifty-eight percent is in the ninety-ninth percentile among peer high schools across the nation. So I guess another way to say it is panorama is a tough grader. Like, fifty-eight percent is in the top one percent in the country of students feeling that they have a sense of belonging. One of my questions for the rapid panorama is, it signals, like, this sort of fifty-eight percent doesn't feel great, right? But yet, it's in the top one percent, so how is, help us understand that so we can message around this well. Obviously, we're still committed to doing better, but, you know, that's, that's an important factor I think we should look at in this particular measure. We're going to have some testing reports in a moment, like, it's always, like, what is the test measuring and what's, what's that comparison base and all those kinds of things? So, you know, we're going to keep trying to get better at it, but the, the high school also deserves a, a lot of credit that this is a really, really strong result, incredibly strong result based on this national sample, so I just wanted to share that, so thank you.
No, thank you. Ms. Bichette.
I just wanted to thank the school council, I have the pleasure of serving on it, and we have a really nice group of, of people that meet once a month, some really great parent input, great student input, and Mr. Bizidlo does a great job facilitating our meetings. It's, I really like how we've structured the report this year, I feel like to be able to take a look back at all the good things that we have accomplished at the high school over the last year, and then to kind of bring it forward, to see what we're still working on and what, what new things we want to take on, but I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure working with all of the group on this and, you know, keep, keep building on, you know, a very strong foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, I think what jumps off the page for me is the progress we've made around CTE and some of the career exploration that we're doing, some really good outreach with businesses and parents and alumni, these lunch and learns, and I think when we talked about this, it's a couple of years old because of the changes that happened to our access to ASAPIT, and I know when we had those discussions, a very small percentage of students were taking advantage of the ASAPIT opportunity, maybe twenty-five to thirty students a year roughly, we're talking thirteen hundred students in the numbers that you presented have had some level of engagement with CTE, whether it be Career Fair or some of the lunch and learns, I mean, that's about seventy percent of the student body, which is just outstanding, and I think you've already got to jump on one of those action steps around the Lester High School opportunity, because Ms. Fritz and I were at the first informational session last week at the high school, where Lester officially presented about the opportunities there, so that's just great, great news altogether, and some really good gains on the well-being, you know, despite the, the ten percent goal, I mean, there's some really significant gains there, so I think you should be proud of that. In terms of optimization of resources, I mean, there's only so much you can do, right? I, I've always said that you've, you've worked magic in that building, I don't know how you do it in terms of scheduling and, and, you know, being able to kind of manage through the day-to-day, but there's, there's no more room, we know that, you know, fingers crossed that we hear something maybe next month, but we're, we've turned storage closets into classrooms and, and offices, we know that, we took many tours last year or so, that, you know, we, and I think each of the ten years I've been on the school committee, we've talked about the space constraints at the high school, so it does, it's not going away. But, and I think, Ms. Trombley, the next time I take a screenshot during a meeting, I'm going to think twice about that, because I'm not learning, so. But no, thank you for the presentation, very, very impressive. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Just want to, again, thank the school council at the high school, Ms. Bizidlo, Ms. Trombley, and, you know, and it should be pointed out, Ms. Trombley is an extraordinary leader of her department, and, and you can certainly get a sense of some of that this evening, and for her to also participate in, in this role as well is, is a real benefit to the high school community. It's an outstanding high school by so many different measures, but just similar to what I said about the preschool, they're focused on getting better, how can we work in areas that are important, and as the school committee has noted, the fact that this is within the context of our larger district strategic plan, and there are many things that apply specifically to the high school, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a high level of expectation because it is a, a level of the education in our pre-K to twelve system, all equally important, but it's very, very high-profile in many ways, and that's something that is, you know, we're, we're very proud of the program there and what it does for our students, and I'm really gratified by the things that they did last year with their plan, and I'm excited for the things that are continuing to happen this year, so much appreciated and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do need to vote on the plan, so therefore, I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the 2024, 2025 school improvement plan for Shrewsbury High School.
So moved?
Moved in second, if all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously, thanks so much. All right, Mr. Bizidlo, we continue on with you as the next item on the agenda. So the next item on the agenda is under curriculum, it's an annual report on Shrewsbury High School testing. Each year, a report is presented that includes Shrewsbury High School student performance data on standardized tests, including the SAT and AP tests. Mr. Bizidlo and Ms. Flynn are here tonight to present the report to us, welcome.
Well, thanks for having us, and I want to welcome Mrs. Flynn, who's done an outstanding job of helping coordinate and collate all this data, put this report together. We spent a lot of time talking about scores in general and access to advanced scoring, advanced programming, as you'll see in this report. Overall, you'll see in, in your pack and the community, we'll see we've done extraordinarily well, again, and, again, a function of, I think, the high school leadership team, our faculty, our staff, our pairs, everyone that's supporting students throughout their endeavors at the high school. So I just want to, want to thank everyone, because this isn't, I, I'm reporting on it, but quite frankly, it takes everyone at the high school and pre-K to eight to get to, students to be prepared for our programming, so I want to thank them for their, their efforts.
Okay, so three exams we're going to discuss tonight are the PSAT, the SAT and ACT, although really SAT, which we have data for, and our Advanced Placement Exams. The PSAT and MSQT is a practice SAT that is given in grade eleven in the fall. Students can qualify for the National Merit Scholarship during that time, they can only qualify in grade eleven. This year, we will try and give grade ten the PSAT, there is a separate exam called the PSAT-10, that's from College Board, and we're going to do that on an early release day, April first, and we'll do it after school, so that'll be, you know, close to eleven-thirty, and we'll see how many grade ten students will want to take advantage of that opportunity.
If I could just interrupt, I think the challenge that we saw this year, we, we were seeing more students that want to take PSATs than we've had during the pandemic. You'll see in a chart of how SAT participation dropped off and has come back a bit and is on its way back up, but we just didn't have the capacity to offer it to grade ten students that took it in the past during the pandemic, so we felt, additionally, with the window given in April, potentially dovetail this with a, an April ER day, we'd get people that would want to stay, number one, but two, we have the capacity to do it. Additionally, we'd have, give those students the, a practice PSAT prior to their National Merit qualifying PSAT in the fall, they'd have a whole four or five months of education prior to taking that, so to give them a good understanding of what they need to do to prep if they wanted to prep for the eleventh-grade PSAT, so thanks to Mrs. Flynn for working with the, the College Board around that and designating a date, it's not an April fool joke, fool's joke, so it will be on April first, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. And then we will talk about the SAT, which is the college entrance exam that most of our students do take. There is sort of a shift, you know, after COVID, or right when COVID started, many schools became optional, test optional, and what we're seeing is slowly, schools are starting to require SAT scores again. You know, I just read for the fall of 2026, so that class would enter as 2027, it's Cornell, Stanford, and Johns Hopkins are requiring it. Already, you have schools like Brown and Harvard and Georgetown, so it's sort of slowly, I just saw that nineteen private schools require SATs and thirty-five public universities. I think the important thing I'm learning is when students ask us, should we submit our scores, should we not, really asking the college, how many, what is the percentage of students who are admitted that are submitting test scores? Because you will see that only maybe five percent of students are admitted if they don't submit test scores. So there's a whole sort of piece to that, that we're trying to work with our students on that. And then AP exams, and good news there, our scores, we did very well on our AP exam scores last year. So we state this every year, so this is kind of old news, but 2021, College Board eliminated the SAT essay and SAT subject tests. About eighty percent, even though there's those schools that are requiring the SAT, eighty percent are still test optional, and about a hundred are test-blind. So test-blind means they do, will not even look at an SAT score. Test optional, if a student submits it, they will look at the scores. And then, interesting enough, every year, we see more and more students taking the SAT, you know, one point nine seven million students this year compared to one point nine million last year. Oh, and then here's the scores, SAT is on a sixteen-hundred scale, eight hundred for evidence-based reading and writing, two hundred to eight hundred, math is the same, two hundred to eight hundred, so combined score would be sixteen hundred total.
Just looking at, excuse me, mean SAT scores, you look at the blue line at the top, that's Shrewsbury, the red line is Massachusetts, the yellow line is national, we have significantly higher than both the state and national levels in terms of SAT. When I look at the scores, they've, they've pretty much, 2021 was somewhat of a blip, we had less test takers, and those that were applying to really competitive colleges and universities took the SAT scores, therefore probably had higher scores, but we're back to where we really were back in 2018, 2019, like, pre-2020 level, so. When we look at the evidence-based reading and writing scores, this year, we're at five ninety-six, again, state was five fifty-nine, and the national average was five nineteen. five ninety-six. Again, state was five fifty-nine, and the national average was five nineteen. And math is where we were, right around where we were last year, five, six fifteen, rather. Well, that, the state average is five fifty, and the national average is five oh five. You'll see that dip in participation rate. Uh, we still haven't recovered from, uh, the early, mid-two thousand teens when we had, you know, anywhere between ninety-six to ninety-five, eighty-eight percent participation, participation rate. The last few years, we've had eighty percent. So we're back up from the low of fifty-two during that pandemic, uh, dip. And this chart I added on on the right, if you look at, just put the difference in scores, and we broke it up by gender, male, female. Males on the top, females below, and the top is evidence-based reading and writing. And the difference of scores in males in Massachusetts is plus forty-five, and the difference nationally is plus ninety. For females, evidence-based reading and writing is the difference between Shrewsbury High School females and Massachusetts females is plus thirty-one, and the difference nationally for females is plus sixty-five. In mathematics, Shrewsbury High School males scored an average of six thirty-eight, and then the difference between their Mass- Massachusetts peers was plus seventy-two points, and their net difference between national peers was, uh, plus one twenty-four. Females, five ninety-four. Difference with their Massachusetts peers, plus fifty-nine. And difference of females between their female peers nationally was plus ninety-eight. So overall, I mean, really good news story about how our students are scoring. Uh, this is, I think, we talked about this, typically females score better on the evidence-based reading and writing. That's historically been a trend for Shrewsbury. That's kind of changed in the last couple of years, so we're paying attention to that. But I think overall, just a really, a good news story about the level of, uh, achievement on this exam as it's based against, uh, people within the state of Massachusetts and also the nation.
So this graph shows the difference of males and females and their scores. Uh, males scored six oh six in critical reading, and females was five eighty-seven. Um, and then math, six thirty-eight for males and five ninety-four for females. So males did score, um, better on both of those. Um, this one, this is a graph of, uh, evidence-based reading and writing and math scores by race, ethnicity. So you can kind of see that. The thing to note here is this is self-reported by students to the College Board. Um, and so you do have some students who don't respond. You can kind of look at all those.
Yeah, in your packet too, we have a chart of the national, how the percentages by self-reported race and ethnicity correlate to our local community. And that's just kind of interesting. I didn't put it in this graph, but it's interesting to take a look at that as well.
And I did read that College Board is not going to report this in the next few years.
Right.
So that's something to note as well.
Yep.
Um, okay, so going on to our PSAT scores, NMSQT. So students every year, um, take the PSAT, and they can be a commended student, a finalist, or a scholarship recipient for the National Merit. So this year of class of twenty-four, we had seventeen students who were commended, four that were finalists, and then one that actually did receive a scholarship, and that scholarship is about twenty-five hundred dollars.
And we're talking, that's a top one percent of people in the country?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right, I'll go through advanced placement. Uh, these are, again, really great news in terms of we've expanded offerings, uh, throughout my tenure and my time here, and it's certainly been, has benefited the students of the high school. This past year, we had four hundred forty-six students participate. That's twelfth year than the previous year. However, we administered more exams, sixty-one more exams last year than the previous year with less people participating. And the, I mean, what's remarkable is fifty-seven percent of seniors took one exam in their time at Shrewsbury High School. That is incredibly high for high school. Uh, and thirty-five percent of those examined administered, students scored the, the highest score. One is a lower score, five is the highest score, so thirty-five percent scored a five on, on, on that exam. Additionally, we had forty-six students participate, uh, in VHS or took, or self-studies and took exams. Again, a bar graph over the last, what is that, ten, eleven years, around the number of tests in the red and the number of student participat-, student participants. Give you a sense of just the scale of the operation. These tests are given the first two weeks of May. Fieldhouse shuts down, and we bring in proctors and red tables, and it's pretty, yeah, it's in pretty intense. We used to go outside of the high school and do it, and, but we outgrew every possible space within the local community, in our community, but also local area. We could, just couldn't, they couldn't accommodate us. So we, we brought it in-house and disrupt kind of our operation a bit, but it works. Again, across the board, blue is Shrewsbury High School, the red is Massachusetts, and these are kind of average scores, and the green is national. I mean, really strong performance in, on, and, uh, in our AP courses across the board. Again, five's the highest. Um, I can't, I don't believe we had anything under an average of three for our exams, which is just remarkable. Three and four, anything above a three could potentially get you college credit, depending on your college or university. Some, uh, more competitive colleges and universities would, um, provide college credit for fours and fives, depending on your college or university. And some extremely competitive don't give any credit for any AP courses. Um, that being said, if you participate in a number of AP courses and you attend to public universities such like UMass, um, we have had in, in other, other schools too, but UMass, one of them where students can actually finish early as a result and save money by saving a semester, by graduating early as a result of entering college with some college credit based on their qualifying scores with advanced placement. Again, we dipped a little the last couple of years, but we're back up to that eighty-nine percent of three or above. Again, the, a gain significant came from last year, from sixty-three percent for four above to seventy-one percent, and then, uh, thirty-five percent for the highest possible score in blue, uh, of, of five. So again, overall, really, really well done by our students. And kudos to our staff and, and families who supported this work. Is this, is this me, Mrs. Flynn? This is. Yeah, so again, we, we are really focused on subgroups across the board as it relates to, uh, self-reporting within the College Board, but also, uh, information within DESE. And this is basically what students self-report in their scores as it relates to AP. Again, the column is number of students within each cohort or how they identify, race, ethnicity. The third column is the number of exams, and then the mean score for each of those exams based upon the, uh, what's reported. Males scored an average of three point nine six, females three point nine oh.
All right, so, class of twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and eighty-six, um, advanced placement scholars, scholars, which is the highest we've had in, I think, probably ever.
Ever.
Um, so the AP scholar, that is students who score three or higher on three exams. The AP scholar with honors is a student who scores a three point two five on four exams. And then the AP, um, scholar with distinction is a, a student who scores a three point five on five exams. So we did really well this year. Um, students are really, um, doing an outstanding job on our AP exams. And this last slide, um, just briefly talks about our school profile. Um, this year, and actually, the last few years, I've been doing a lot of research and attending some webinars on the importance of our school profile and what's included. Test scores are a big part of that, um, as well as our community demographic, graduation requirements, course levels, um, how we grade, which is extremely important, our GPA scale, that's probably the most important. Uh, future plans and special programs. Um, you know, what I'm hearing is many schools, what they do, the reader gets to know our high school, but also they compare students who have previously applied from Shrewsbury High to students who are applying to that school. So it's a little bit of a competition between our students. Um, but this is something that they have told me, they'll have the students transcript up, and right next to it on the screen is the school profile. Um, so it's one of the first things that's looked at. So it's just something I'm, every year I revise a little bit. Um, I keep attending different webinars from schools because I think this ultimately does help our students.
Yeah, we made some adjustments as a result of attending, uh, in, I, I'd like to think we've had some positive gains as a result of that, because we're putting particularly, uh, how our students perform right in the forefront. Like, it's in your face, one of the first things you see. Like, here's, here's the student profile you have, and here's how the school performs generally. So it's, we're a high-performing high school. There's, uh, scores of kids doing really, really well, like hundreds of kids doing really, really well. And so it sort, tells the readers, we're in a really competitive place, and they're doing really well. This, like, as a student, so to help normalize with not reporting rank, that certainly helps us in terms of, of the overall school score. So important for the college admissions process. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Appreciate.
Um, thank you for the report. It was very well done, um, and definitely a good news story. I think one of the other statistics that really jumped out at me was the twenty-three percent of Shrewsbury, uh, students in the class of twenty-four that took three or more exams si-, senior year, which is a lot. So, I mean, it's almost a quarter of the class is taking three AP exams. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. So that's, yeah, so that's a, that's just a, it's a lot of students, um, given, um, that are taking that many APs as a senior. So, um, yeah, but thank you very much for the report. Um, really always interesting to see kind of what the trends are, and, um, especially with the SAT requirement coming back potentially, and the increase in the number of students, I think, that are going to be needing to take that as, uh, something to keep our eye on.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Ms. Severn?
Yeah, I, I, I also appreciate the report, and, you know, it's an incredible school. There's a lot of kids who are working really hard, including educators who are helping them get there. Um, just out of curiosity, as we think about the SAT as sort of something that some schools were dabbling with the idea of not having before COVID, and then obviously during COVID, there's all this big, big change. Um, when we think is really something you ju-, you just said, is, is there any move on the class rank? Do most schools not, uh, high schools of our similar demographic not rank students? Is that still the trend? Is there, is there any move to think about that differently? Um, just when we think about, you're trying to explain
Yeah.
our school to other schools, where are we on that?
Yeah, so my own opinion is this, based upon the research we did with a study group, oof, God, five, ten years ago. I forget, maybe ten years ago now.
You're now before my time. You need to educate.
Yeah, so it was like ten years ago, we did this with a study group, and the high-performing schools, and we looked at this, even private schools, when we talk, uh, Middlesex School, Cover Dummer, um, Lawrence Academy, go through, none of those schools, Pingree, PA, PE, Phillips Academy, Phillips Andover, Phillips Exeter, none of those schools report class rank. The strength of those schools and performance of students is so high, and I, I would think similar to ours in terms of strength of school, that there's a disadvantage. And one of the things, when we took this topic up, we had, I'll use the family, we had two sisters who were outstanding students. Uh, one student had, let's say, four AP scores and had great scores. Uh, and the other student had, came up and had better scores, and yet was out of the top ten percent of our class. So immediately colleges and universities eliminate people if they don't meet, like, if, if, if you're out of the top ten, we only take the top ten percent of the class, you're immediate, immediately eliminated. Colleges and universities look for ways to eliminate people right away. So if we have a high-performing school with kids who do really, really well, um, and you just happen to fall in the eleventh or twelfth percentile, college, like, they'll move that, they'll move on. Um, so by eliminating that, it gives people or colleges the opportunity to look deeper at not only the school profile, but also student, their performance.
Thank you.
I, I believe, again, I believe we've had students benefit from that. Um, I think the acceptances have changed as a result of that. I'm not sure, again, I say this out loud, I, I'm not sure why other high schools just don't do it. I mean, we're providing more potential opportunities for students. I think that's a good thing. Um, and that study group would, that, that was about a year long, I think, right? We did a lot of work with that and did a lot of research on it, but ultimately, we felt this can only benefit our students, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think many high schools in Massachusetts do not rank anymore. I did another study at a different, um, school, and it's, was astonishing how many schools don't rank. So, um, it, I don't think it is a disadvantage to our students, and the other thing it is advantage for is scholarships. So many, you know, colleges will say the top ten percent of students that rank in the ten percent will get this scholarship. Well, if you don't, you know, give rank, then you won't have, you'll be able to get that scholarship. So it really does benefit the student not to rank.
Thanks.
Further questions, comments? Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Oh, appreciate the information, and, and, again, kudos to everyone involved, uh, for the, you know, the students themselves, of course, and the educators who prepared them and the families who supported them. Uh, this is, continues to be an outstanding track record of, of performance. Um, and in the context, you know, just, I mean, we know that, uh, we're also being very thoughtful about working with students and families around what's a reasonable load of courses to take. Um, and also knowing that, you know, it isn't, we, I know that you've reported, and we did our strategic planning a few years ago and had some college admissions folks join us. You know, the total number of AP courses that someone takes doesn't necessarily make a difference beyond a certain point. They're looking for quality, they're looking for breadth of interest, they're looking for a lot of, a whole lot of things. Um, it's not just a numbers game, and we certainly want to be thoughtful about, uh, because, you know, there's some other data we're looking at in different, uh, ways. There's some state data around a survey our students do, and there's a percentage that students feeling like there's an awful lot of pressure on them academically. We hear this from our students when we talk to our students. So, you know, how is it that we can make sure that, you know, students are, are challenged and they're in a rigorous program of studies, uh, but at the same time are not being overwhelmed by what's being expected of them in terms of the time and the expectations? And trying to balance that is very important. And I think that you, I think we are very successful in many ways of having a balance of high focus on academics and rigor, uh, but also having, uh, a, a balance and a focus on the student's well-being as well. And that's, we have to continue to look at that because there's some societal issues around that that are challenging. So continuing to, to focus on that area will be important as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is also under curriculum. It is the State MCAS Testing Annual Report. Each year, the administration provides a report on the district's performance on state exams. Uh, Ms. Amy Clowder, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, is here to provide a summary. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for the independent reading that you've done on my behalf. As we picture those students reading up there, I know that you were doing a lot of reading as well. Um, so I, it's still true that MCAS is kind of a snapshot of students' progress and growth over time. Um, but when I think about a metaphor in looking at recent data, I think, um, it's more helpful to kind of think about the district as a community of power stations, and MCAS as a signal to test the strength of the system. Power is important to everybody in the community. You want your lights on, you want your heat to work. Um, but for various reasons over time, we're, become accustomed to having experiences with power vary. And in some cases, like a pandemic, the power might go out. Uh, some people will be gravely affected if they have personal circumstances, they need oxygen, for example. Um, the length of the outage is important, and at the same time, while some neighborhoods are experiencing that, other neighborhoods, um, may be unaffected or even unaware of the impact of the power. Um, and I think when we think about the impact of the pandemic and we look at our results, we can see that play out by thinking about different grade levels of different neighborhoods. Uh, and I'm not going to beat this metaphor to death, but I think it really helps us to think about, for the, for the most part, if we think about our MCAS score history, the lights have been on and we've had few interruptions. And I think the big surprise in looking at, um, post-pandemic performance is looking at the different ways that grade levels have been impacted, and also thinking about, despite the fact that our crews are working really hard, um, there are some things that are easier to fix than others. And, um, so I want to make sure that, you know, we're transparent about the fact that some, some results are taking longer to come back than is comfortable. But I have full confidence that we will come back because we have educators that, as you've heard from a previous report, um, are really skillful at getting kids to where they need to be. So, we are currently kind of looking at the system and trying to figure out what do we need to fine-tune in order to better support our students? Because the goal is that the lights are on, and then everybody's reading, and we're seeing some gains. So, uh, I know you have a lengthy report, and I would direct the people watching to kind of look for more information in this report online. Um, and you've got a full agenda, and I'm at the end of it. So my goal tonight is to really focus this presentation on the three questions you see on the slide. Um, and these are the questions our district leaders consider when we get the MCAS results. Uh, and then I'm going to stop talking so that there's time for any questions you might have at the end. So when we think about Shrewsbury's strengths, our scores are higher than the state average, but that's typical. So that's not something we would normally celebrate. That's something we'd expect. A better gauge is how we compare to public school systems in the area and districts with similar demographics. Um, and in analyzing our results, we can see that we're not an outlier in thinking about the ways the scores were impacted by the pandemic. The pace of recovery for, um, affecting districts is affecting districts across the board. Um, and our good news is that our math scores are showing a better rate of recovery. Um, in grade ten- grade 10, we see a particular bright spot because student scores in that grade span strengthened. And so if you're looking at this chart, you can see kind of the trend over time here. And you can also see kind of the most recent results for grades three to eight compared to grade 10. Where do we see persistent gaps? Well, if math is stronger, English, language, arts is the area of our biggest concern. In analyzing the results, you know, we can see that there are certain grade levels that are having a harder time coming back. For example, if we look here, grades three to eight declined. Grade 10 was the only grade where we saw an increase in ELA scores. It's a little bit like losing the internet, scratching your head and trying to figure out how you get it back. I know the things that you would do to kind of restore power to the system, and I can tell you that we are working really hard to do those things. We need to have a really strong curriculum in place. This is our first year of full implementation of the new curriculum, and so it might take time to see the impact of that switch. We know we need to be able to support students that need our tier one and a little more. So we have reading specialists in place and Common Criteria in our schools. Got generous support in order to make sure we have literacy tutors and classroom teachers are also working on intervention. And across schools, we have schedules in place to ensure that there is a time for students to get both the curriculum that they need in tier one and also extra support. But it's also relatively new in terms of adding those resources to the middle level. So there are some students who are going to take longer to recover, and we have to be mindful of just accelerating that, that support. So if we look here to think, okay, so this is disappointing results for us, how does our experience of this, of these results compare to the results of other districts? So in this graph, you can see Shrewsbury is this dark blue line and the state is this interrupted pink line. Thanks to Liz Tedesco for thinking of a great visual to show this. When we look at these scores, you can see the trend across districts. There are some districts outperforming us, but the trend line is the same. In other words, there's the same disruption impacted us all. If we started higher, we ended higher, but we all experienced that same curve. Are you following me here?
Yep.
So this is our area districts, and this is how we compared to DART districts. DART districts are the analysis tool, the resource that the state gives us to kind of look at districts that have similar demographics beyond our area. And you can see every year, these, these shift a little bit. For example, we've been compared to Burlington and Natick for some time, but Lexington is a new comparative for us. Arlington is familiar. And you can see again, the shape of the line is pretty similar for local districts and also our DART districts. So when we think about how to remedy this, how to make sure that we're supporting students and reaching the goals we set for them, we need to think about that what could be the reasons for decline in, in the rate of recovery. And, and here's where we kind of have to acknowledge the limits of the metaphor. Because you can take a tree off a power line and see a relatively quick fix. But we are, you know, we're not sure how to recover from a virus in the sense that we have a compounding kind of number of factors that might explain the decline. You heard about kind of the chronic attendance challenge we've had. I know in previous presentations, you've heard about kind of the behavioral and social emotional learning challenges we've had. We do know that a systemic response is important, and we've used the wisdom gained from COVID to kind of rebuild systems stronger. And so we're looking at some of this, this work by subject area to see, you know, do we see different patterns with the same group of students? We're looking at the experiences of cohorts over time. We're doing item analysis to see, can we look at specific areas where students need to improve? And also collecting anecdotal information. So one of the things that was gratifying to hear last year from early implementers of the EL literacy curriculum was, wow, I saw my kids really persevere in a way that they hadn't before. So I'm hoping with more teachers administering that new curriculum this year, we'll see similar rates. One factor I didn't put here that I mentioned was that we purposely implemented EL even with our early adopters a little bit later than we otherwise would, because I was recognizing that we were implementing new foundational curriculum. And teachers who are learners can't learn two curriculums at one time, so we staggered the implementation. I think that in a, in a way, it made launching foundational reading easier, but it delayed student writing experiences in a way that might show up in the MCAS. So that, that's something that's top of mind for me as we're looking at this year, because we really want to look at to what extent do we see recovery in writing. So if I think about subject area, one thing that's important to note here is that when we think about English, language, arts scores, it includes both reading skills and writing skills. So this is the grade five writing skills. You can see that they have to write an essay explaining an idea based on information in two passages. They have to use important information from the passages as evidence. Again, this is very well aligned to the curriculum the kids are experiencing now. This is the possible points awarded for that one test item. This is kind of Shrewsbury's percentage of students earning those points versus the state. And you can see, we typically exceed the state. Here, the margin is really close. So I look to see kind of what does this look like for grade eight? And again, this is an indicator to me that writing is a really good opportunity for us to kind of focus on improvement between next year and this. We're see, our margins are very close to where the state is performing, which is atypical for us. And as students are going up through the grades, they're going to experience, you know, not one, but four essays. So the impact of those writing opportunities and all those missed points kind of compounds. I think the other piece is when was education disrupted? So I know you know this because you lived through the pandemic too, but I think it had helped me to kind of grid out and say, okay, when did closure hit and which grades were most impacted? How does that compare to our scores? So we're seeing that, you know, if, if we think about next year's third grade, they will be minimally disrupted and they will have had more experience with the new curriculum. The disruption that we're seeing kind of mirrors kind of the mid-level scores, I think, as well. So for me, this underscores the importance of putting plans in place to accelerate and intervene and thinking about what does acceleration look like at levels where we haven't had to build systems of intervention because we haven't experienced that number of students struggling in that way. And finally, you know, different neighborhoods are impacted differently and different people on the street are impacted differently. Subgroups are going to feel that effect that all students feel more so. And so they have a disproportionate kind of impact when their education is disrupted, because in many ways, we saw lagging performance in our subgroups before the pandemic. So I put grade 10 up here to show the comparison of students with disabilities in the yellow, to low-income students in the orange, English learners in the blue, and all students in the dark blue. Remember, students can be in multiple subgroups, because you could have a student with disabilities also an English learner. But one of the things that I was thinking here is that our best opportunity is to close the gap is to have them longer in school. So if we look at grade 10, we can see, and you, and you look at your report, we've closed the gap by grade 10 better for low-income students than in previous grades. But one of the gaps that kind of persists is English learners. When you dig a little deeper, you find that for some students that are not yet reaching proficiency on MCAS, many of those students have entered really recently. So we look at particularly at the high school, the rates of students who need to take the retake. Lots of those kids are new English learners at the high school level. So they haven't been with us in the same way that their peer cohorts has been. And that, those, that number of kids is increasing for us over time at all levels. And so thinking about, so how do we support all students in accelerating their learning, but how do you support a student who's a language learner at the same time without compromising the language instruction they're developing? And these are complex things we're wrestling with. So in some ways, I'm disappointed. I want to be transparent about that. But in other ways, I understand why we see different rates of recovery, because we're seeing different challenges than we did pre-pandemic. I certainly want to make sure that we acknowledge the hard work that our teachers are doing, because I think that it's natural for people to say like, why is this happening? Our teachers are working really hard. And when we see their hard work play out in our data meetings, that's really encouraging to me. So how does that compare with other assessment information? At this point, MCAS data, you know, it's episodic, so we need more, more regular signals of student progress. You know this. And at this point, this information I'm talking to you about is old information. So for the last part of this, I really want to focus on how MCAS results square with other assessment information, namely kind of the STAR reading, which we, we give three times a year, and more for students that are below benchmarks. And so when we look at our intervention data, fewer students are requiring reading support this fall than last year, with the exception of grade two. And we see less of a decline in grade one. It's worth noting, when I was talking to the reading specialist about this data today, our, our benchmark for end of grade one is reading 49 words per minute correctly. And the benchmark for the beginning of grade two is 81 minutes, 81 words per minute. So it jumps quite a bit. I think that explains kind of the grade two piece. But in general, we see this, these rates of intervention declining in ways that we'd hoped to see. So if we're strengthening our writing, then we recognize that's a content area opportunity for us. We strengthen our systems of support, we see signals that that's working. I'm hoping that that will ultimately move the needle on our student achievement scores. But another piece we look at, you know this from past presentations, is the rate of growth that need to happen. And so technically, we've met the threshold for moderate growth. When you look at 41 and 45 student growth rates here, those are not numbers that typically make us happy. We would like to see numbers of 50 and above. And certainly, if we're looking to close the gap between where we were pre-pandemic and now, we would need to see much higher rates of growth if we're accelerating student progress. So we would want to see growth in the higher 50s and 60s. And so that's another metric to really watch. We want to see individual student trend lines going up. So for that reason, when we're looking at the STAR reports, students who are not meeting grade level expectations have an ambitious goal. It's, you know, how are we going to get these kids to the ultimate trajectory piece? And we look at, and every six weeks, where are they now? Do they need more support? Do we need to move them up a tier so that they get more directive support or more frequent support? Or are they meeting their benchmarks and we, you know, they can be exited and get intervention from the classroom teacher as opposed to a specialist because they're on the right trajectory? So again, I think, you know, I want to be transparent about the things to celebrate and the things that we're concerned about. But I also really want to affirm the hard work of all of our teachers and teams in thinking about how we build a stronger data culture, how we respond and support different needs, because all kids are different and what works for one student may work less well for another. And kind of the thorny issues we're wrestling with that are new challenges for the district. And so I wanted to feature this graphic. I had the pleasure of being in three different classrooms this, this week, I mean, three different schools this week, Patton, Floral, and Beal, as we do instructional rounds. And again, that's another system. We're looking at how the implementation of the new curriculum is going with an eye towards what student experiences are like and how well they're preparing students for, for success on questions that mirror kind of the MCAS grade level expectations. Scott Mulcahy and the crew at Patton kind of created this graphic to show teachers how the work that we're doing in literacy and instructional rounds connects to the strategic goals and priorities and ultimately serves our literacy vision. So we get to the portrait of graduate success. And I think teachers by and large have appreciated kind of hearing feedback about what's going well in classrooms and our efforts to align professional development support, both at grade level meetings or department meetings at the building level and also at the district level when we have formal PD days to kind of address some of those things. As we know that, that we're going to strengthen that over time. I've said to teachers who are feeling overwhelmed by implementing kind of new practices and planning mechanisms, that we're going to be great at this in three years. And it's going to take time to do new learning. And just as we have a growth mindset for students, they need to embrace a growth mindset for themselves, because I think they have really high expectations that we can instantly close gaps. And I think what this data is showing us is that for some students, it's going to take longer. So thank you for your kind attention. I'm happy to take any questions you might have. And I just want to remind that anybody watching that there, one, the importance of, we can't close gaps if kids aren't in school, so please get your kids to school. And also, if you are looking for more detailed information, you can certainly find it in the, in the report.
Thank you for the presentation, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Ms. Rupert.
Thank you for the report. It was light reading. Good for us. It's, you look at the report and you say, that's disappointing. Like you were looking for this like giant growth that we went up, but that's not realistic. We, it would be great if we had instant results, but you're not going to get instant results. It's going to be something over time. But truly thank you to you and to our teachers, to our reading specialists. There is a lot of work that's going on with this. So even though we're not seeing this like giant jump, a lot of stuff is going on behind the scenes. And there are, you know, we do have data that we have less kids that are needing those supports, which is great. We do have other things to help. MCAS is just one data point. We have other data points to look to. And there are other positives, like when I went on to the, the Dusty website, Coolidge did a really good job in terms of they went up in their scores, like comparing them to the other schools in our, you know, other elementary schools. They went up and that's, that's a very positive thing. And we have the strong curriculum, we have a dedicated team, we have the support in place. So it's a slow race, which we'll get to. That said, there's still, for me, you know, grade five and seven were a little worrisome to me just because of where they are. And they're going, so grade five is our current sixth, so next year, they're going off to Oak, which we do have, you know, support in place. But grade seven is our current eighth graders, they're going up to the high school. And being able to read and comprehend and be able to write essays, that's something that, you know, we have to think about. How do we support them more so? And, you know, maybe they're getting the supports at Sherwood, they're getting the supports at Oak, that this is kind of, you know, even out. But those were two grades that sort of popped out to me with our ELA. And thinking about how do we extra support students like that? Because if you do think about where they were when life got disrupted, grade five was learning how to read. So they probably, when you're looking at their stories, it's more reading and understanding versus grade seven was probably more, they knew how to read, but how do you interpret and how do you like think bigger picture? I'm sure if you look at how their answers were on the MCAS, it would probably show the difference that way. But thank you for the work. I know this is, we're, this is good work. And it will continue. And I know in a few years, when the, when the students who are making their way through the system, who were not necessarily impacted by COVID, with everything we have in place, I'm sure that the, the scores will go in the direction that we want them to. Fingers crossed.
Great. Ms. She.
Thank you so much for the comprehensive report. It was very well done. Given the scores, particularly in English, I'm very glad that we were able to make some critical investments over the past couple of years in literacy, in the new curriculum, and also in the reading specialists. So I think that'll certainly help.
Yes, I'm very grateful for your support.
And then with the data to adjust instruction and monitoring student progress, I'm looking at the STAR report, STAR data with regard to reading. Do we have any systems or assessments in place to look at writing? That, like for data to get, you know, to get some feedback on writing and where, because that does seem like an area of concern.
Yeah, so the focus of the last department meeting at the elementary level was to engage teachers in taking the assessments, which are often written assessments, to kind of develop exemplars and think a little bit about that. How are kids performing relative to those assessments? What are the things that kids are really being asked to know and do? And I think that's certainly an area where we're looking to think about, how do we integrate Quick writes? How do we think about more opportunities for writing to grow students' progress in that area? Because we know that they've not had as many opportunities as they may have had previously. But I can't say we have a, we have a full plan in place because we're really just starting to kind of think about the connection between where we are with the curriculum and the writing piece. Can say that in every Can say that in every module, one of the things that we're looking at really closely is the pacing, because students learn about a topic, they read and write about it, and then they have a performance task where they demonstrate their knowledge and put those two things together. And so, part of the reason that pacing is important is to make sure kids get the wealth of experiences in each of those modules, because they're both literary modules and nonfiction modules, and you know, both of those genres show up on the MCAS. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, to the best we can, kind of look at where pacing is, is by grade level and support teachers in making wise decisions about where do we put our time and energy if we're lagging a little bit behind in implementation. But it's, it's not an easy thing to, to do. In some ways, we're kind of, we're still in year-one implementation, so there's, it's a, it's a challenge to think about how to capture, how to capture the professional development time we have. I think one resource, you know, to your point, Rachel, that has been really important is the ongoing support of the literacy consultant, Kristin Osborne, three days a week, and thinking about what are some things that challenges specific to the middle level that we might want to take a closer look at.
Thank you, because you're so skilled at taking a lot of data, you know, using this data-informed, you know, process that we feel is beneficial, and you can distill it so everyone can understand it. So thank you for that, because I know there's a lot here. And I, for me, the, the, yes, where the scores may not be where we want them to be, it's that trend line. The trend lines, you know, that makes me have a lot more comfort in what our scores are, because it's, you know, Shrewsbury, State, National, follow the same trend line, which I think is the, the point that we're doing the right things. Everybody else is trying to do the right things, and our scores will go up. I think we've put good resources in place. For me, I'm thinking more around early intervention and making sure that the students who are identified get that intervention, you know, that they need to get them to the level where they can move to these next grades and have those skills to be successful. Can you speak a little bit about how a student is, you know, they're identified, and then what's the next step?
So we have different criteria depending on how, what the results show. We started off this year, you know, we ended the, the year with data. So one of the benefits of a new system is that we've not had to start from scratch with kind of the assessments and wait until October for the assessments. We kind of have last year's results to start off with the crew that was in intervention, see what summer regression may have looked like for them. If students made progress over the summer, that was terrific. They, they came off the intervention roll. But by and large, we started with that crew while we waited for the screening results. Anybody who's not meeting grade-level expectations, we sit in a, a data-level meeting for that grade level. We look at all of the kids. The reading specialists have done that work kind of prior to the meeting. And so they have some thoughts about, you know, the diagnostics behind, what are you seeing here? If, for example, we have a student who's really fluent, but they're, they're, so in other words, they're able to read words on a page at a certain level, but their, their writing is really low. Part of it is, okay, they haven't learned some of the phonics work in order to have their spelling be as good as their reading. They've memorized a lot of words that they've encountered so far, but we can predict without support, and this is where our middle-level readers are. They've seemed fluent right now, but as they're preparing to read more complicated text and multi-syllabic words, they might start to fall apart, and their spelling scores show us that. They need some shoring up of that foundational reading. So we've just put into place some, some work to support them. One of the things we, we see is that a lot of students that are showing up at the middle level reading caseloads are, are students that are English learners, either because they're entering our system at the middle level or because they're entering from systems where they've lacked foundational skill support. But for most students, we put them on a, a goal based on what area they're falling down in, whether that's fluency, and we're looking to increase their words read per minute and support them with kind of scooping words and phrases and understand how to read more naturally, or helping them to really break apart and, and understand how to break syllables, what are syllable rules. And then, we figure out how we're going to monitor progress in an interim way. So there's typically kind of a, a weekly diagnostic, and we're looking at kind of what are the signals that students are either making progress or not? And when students aren't making progress, the reading specialist and the literacy tutor just kind of dive into, why is that? But for most students, I think the bulk of students receiving support or getting support from the classroom teacher within what we call a what I need or a win block. And that can be really effective in, in terms of helping kids kind of get back to where they need to be. And part of it is really just giving kids a little bit longer practice. Certainly, the kids that have had more foundational reading skills have seen more success. So we know that that, that foundational piece is a key component in what was missing before and is now kind of being shored up. And definitely thinking about how to, how do you both teach the content area and also reading at the same time at the middle level? Because we don't want kids to miss out on some of the knowledge that they're gaining in science, because they're not reading, for example. That's, that's not. So that's where you'd have a scaffold for a student who's not yet at benchmark, because we, the goal is to understand the science. And yet, where are there opportunities to kind of both strengthen their reading and, and integrate some of that foundational skill stuff when they're multi-syllabic words that pop up, for example, in a social studies passage? So, one of the things that's been really helpful is getting not just the Lisa Daly, who is the English Language Arts Coordinator at the middle level, but all of the coordinators have really participated in understanding the foundational reading, kind of professional development, and played a part in supporting intervention efforts. So, the science teachers wanted me to come, for example, and teach a close reading lesson, so they could understand kind of, how do you do that? Because we read a lot of articles in science, and scientists do a lot of reading. We want to make sure kids are supported in that way. I give them a lot of credit for asking for that, because that's not their discipline. But I think it is an all-hands-on-deck approach. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like everyone, appreciate you for the amount of time and effort to pull all this together and to kind of comb through layers upon layers. And, and I really want to applaud the district for the transparency. I think people should go online and look at the report. It is seventy-three pages. But it does give you lots of different ways to kind of, kind of think about this. And I guess I, a little bit, as my colleague said, feel reassured when you look at the data of other districts that we're kind of all going through this. And I don't want, I don't want people to feel like, oh, they're just sort of like blaming COVID again. Like, no, this is, like, how come, that the issue is much more complex than that? That it's some of the things around absenteeism and some of the things around the behaviors that we've seen. And, you know, some, some of the things about sort of like overall engagement. And we, we just heard good things at the high school of kids being more engaged, and so that should help. And so, you know, the, all the different pieces that are necessary to successfully help a young person develop and get to that, that, that portrait we have of a graduate. And it's, it's a, it is a very, very long road. I think you used the analogy of a race. It's a very long one for us, us to stay on. So, I, I certainly appreciate that. I would love to at some point see a version of this, if we could, sort of a few years prior. Because we have a tendency now to, like, everything is, like, right before COVID, like, where was it? And I don't want to pretend in any way that we thought, like, the year before COVID, everything was perfect, and everyone was great, and you were like, well, well, we probably had some things we needed to work on, and we're constantly trying to improve. But where were the trend lines for us and for others? And were we on sort of an upward trajectory that always turned down? Or were we a little flatlining? Were there, were there issues that were maybe we, we could have picked up on? And I, you know, I, I know you're a huge proponent of the, of the literacy program, and we probably should have done that earlier, right? Now we look back now, and you're like, ah, but you know better, you do better, and here we are. So, that's something I'd, I'd love to at some point, just kind of figure out, what are we, what are we aiming to get to? Right? And so, better is one thing, but are we trying to get back to exactly where we were before COVID? Or is there actually something, something different? And I think the MCAS sometimes has so much data, it's hard to know what's most important to, to look at. And I, I think the only other thing I would, I would say is I just want to continue to appreciate the need to disaggregate the data and make sure that our various vulnerable populations are getting the attention that they need. And I know that's part of the data-driven work. But at the, at the grade level, at the school level, like, we have to consistently do that so that we don't, we don't miss, and we, we grab the kids as quickly as we can to kind of get them, get them what they need. And so, like others, it's not like a wonderful news story. No one wants to see trend lines that are going down. That doesn't, that doesn't feel good. But that doesn't mean that I don't feel confident that we're putting a lot of those, the right blocks in place to ultimately help, help, help kids get there. So, again, thank you for the, the time and effort and delivering what is not, probably your favorite report. Because I, because I know there's an incredible amount of work going on to kind of help us. How, how do we turn the curve? But it's, we're not alone in that, so there's a, a little bit of solace there.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the report. I agree with my colleagues on all the points. I appreciate how you summarized seventy-three pages. Nicely.
Every year I feel like I get a little bit better at that.
No, I mean, there's a lot of work.
I feel like I should apologize for prior years.
Yeah, no, it's okay. No, I, I mean, it's a significant amount of data, obviously, to digest. But it's, it's important work, and I appreciate all the, the effort that you put into it. Really, the summary for me helped me understand, or just kind of put in perspective, the strengths, the gaps, the root causes or the potential root causes. And I like the analogy of the power variance, right? It got me thinking about the fourteen months that we were in hybrid mode, right? And then turning the lights back on in May of 2021 to full in-person learning. And I thought, for me, the key slide, I think it was slide number thirteen, with regards to the educational disruptions and kind of where they fall within the current cohorts. That was very impactful for me, just to kind of understand, you know, where those disruptions may be causing some challenges in the, the data that we, we saw. So, and it does feel very much like a sprint, right? Because you want to get to, you know, the students that are in the greatest need, but it really is more of a marathon, I think, in, in a lot of ways. It's just, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of changes to curriculum, a lot of implementation of literacy tutors. And, you know, I do feel like the investments we've made over the last few years absolutely are addressing the gaps that we've, we've discussed. So, we have an outstanding team of educators who are doing the really hard work every day, and we definitely appreciate the work that they're doing to achieve success for all students. So, thank you for the report. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Some more kudos to Ms. Clodder for the hard work for the report, and Liz Tedesco, her assistant, who contributed significantly to it as well. And for the summary and for all of your comments, I think they're important. And I think that, you know, looking at the data with clear eyes and, and trying to ascertain what it means and for how it can, you know, what it means for us to try to improve. We're always trying to improve. You know, we want all of us, all of our kids, to do as well as possible. You know, one thing that I would certainly caution against, and I remember there was, many years ago, I wrote an article that used an analogy that said, it was talking about sort of this idea, and we just heard some of it with the most recent election, right? Teaching to the test and test prep. And wanting our students to have a rich, meaningful curriculum and educational experiences that prepare them well for our vision of a portrait of a graduate. And the analogy was that, you know, sort of, test prep is like the cotton candy of educational, you know, because it's, you can get an initial bump, right? You can get some, like, that initial sugar high, but it doesn't last. You can get kids to, you know, oh, they're going to do well on this particular test. It doesn't mean that they're learning particularly well. And I think the approach that the district is taking under Ms. Clodder's leadership and the shared leadership of, you know, everybody involved, including our educators, how can we make sure that the quality of what's happening and what we're seeing, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, what I'm seeing in classrooms with the literacy program being implemented is really rich, high-level student thinking and, and learning that not only is making them better readers, it's making them better thinkers. And that's what translates into writing. And I, you know, certainly there are going to, there's specific skills we have to work on to make sure that they're prepared well for what the standards demand of them. Because that the MCAS is, has a tight correlation to our state standards. As tests go, whatever you might think of standardized tests, it's highly correlated to what kids are expected to do. So if we do the good job that we are doing, I, I am very confident that we're going to see that payoff. Some of that, we're going to see that payoff, I think, in better MCAS scores over time. I think it's also going to pay off in the most important ways, which is making sure our kids are educated in a way that prepares them for their futures, to be strong ones when it comes to their options for further education or success in the workplace, whatever they choose to do. So, again, it's important work. It's one of our commitments strategically, is educational excellence. That means more than just test scores, but this is an important measure to give us a sense of how are we doing and, and what can we do to make sure that we're getting kids where they need to go in terms of their skills and their knowledge. So, appreciate it and thank you. Thanks for the commentary. But it's hard work, but I'm proud of the work that's happening, and I'm confident it's going to lead to good places for kids.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the report.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is under policy. It is a first reading of the preferred vocational technical school policy. At the meeting on November sixth, the school committee voted unanimously to approve a memorandum of agreement between Leicester Public Schools and Shrewsbury Public Schools that designated Leicester High School as the district's preferred vocational technical school. Tonight, the committee will hear a first reading of a policy required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that outlines the specifics of what this designation means for students who are applying for admission to a vocational technical school. I believe, Ms. Boucher?
Yes. So, the policy subcommittee met last week to discuss the preferred vocational technical school policy, given that we've adopted at our last meeting the agreement with Leicester. So, because Shrewsbury is not a member of a regional vocational technical high school district, the students in Shrewsbury who wish to be enrolled in a state-approved vocational technical high school must apply as non-resident students. And if accepted, the school department must pay tuition and transportation costs for the students to attend. And per guidance of the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the school committee may vote to designate one or more vocational technical high schools as the school of preference for Shrewsbury resident students who wish to apply to vocational technical high schools, which is state-approved pursuant to Chapter Seventy-four. And by designating a school of preference, the school committee is thereby directing Shrewsbury students to apply to the preferred school before applying to any other vocational technical schools. So this policy sets forth that, that we are tech, you know, that we're going to be designating. It doesn't specifically reference Leicester, but that we are going to have a preferred school. So, I encourage the members to read through it. Let us know if you have any questions or comments. And also, you know, the, the community is, you know, also welcome to take a look at it. Let us know if you have any questions or comments, and we will plan to vote on this at our next meeting.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions, comments? I definitely encourage the public to reach out to us via email, schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12 MA.us. If you have any questions or comments regarding the policy, we always appreciate feedback from the public. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments on this?
No, it, it tracks with what the guidance is from DCE. I think it's, it's clear and, you know, sets forth the reasons why, if the district does choose to designate, which we just did, of course, in the case of Leicester, what that means for families who are applying. And that's work that we will make sure we do as we communicate each year around options students have. Typically, that's the focus, is on eighth grade, of course, because they're making that decision whether to apply to a vocational technical high school.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is under finance and operations. It's a vote to designate a person for school-based asbestos management. All public and private K-12 schools must assign a person responsible for overseeing the management of asbestos-containing materials in the school buildings. This responsible person is called the A-H-E-R-A designated person. A bulletin summarizing the main duties of the designated person is enclosed in our packets. Mr. Joseph Sexton, Division Manager, Public Buildings, has attended the eight-hour asbestos coordinator LEA designated person course as the Institute for Environmental Education, or at the Institute of Environmental Education. And the school department recommends that the committee vote to appoint Mr. Sexton to this position for Shrewsbury Public Schools. Dr. Sawyer, any further?
This is a pretty pro forma piece. Mr. Sexton is the new division head for public buildings, and he has the training, and we need to have someone appointed, so this is straightforward as they go.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. There being none, I need a motion that the committee vote to appoint Mr. Joseph Sexton, the designated person for school-based asbestos management for all of the Shrewsbury Public Schools.
So moved.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on November sixth were enclosed. Any revisions or edits? There being none, they'll be accepted as written. All right. We do need to go into executive session tonight. So, I need to request a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A-seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid, purpose seven. to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigating. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts student record laws, purpose seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Moved in second. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifahpour?
Aye.
Ms. Heffron?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.